My foil.
You'll be here.
We have like seven meetings left to give it to.
Good. You'll be here.
Hello, good evening, welcome to the March eighteenth edition of the Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners, Cemetery Commissioners meeting. And just to make everyone aware, this meeting is being recorded, please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and testable.
Thank you. First on the agenda, citizen comments, are there any citizens here with us this evening that wish to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one, onto public business, Ed Bazanet, Historical Commission, request to name Old Dyhouse property Centennial Park.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to be here.
Yes, for the people who don't know who you are, could you name an address?
Ed Bazanet, Chairman, Historical Commission, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, we just got these this evening.
Yes, yes, I'm going to read it through, so you'll be able to read, see it with me.
Okay, so, what, one, thinking we might need some time to digest this before we take any action on this, hoping to have you back after budget season if possible.
Um, no.
No?
No, I need to move forward, um, looking for money.
Mm-hmm.
To get concepts, so let me explain what I'm going to do. What I, what I need tonight is, is to get this thing named, we don't commit any funds to it, it's just an indicator of what we want to do for the Tur Centennial, and then it gives me the chance to go out and fundraise for the conceptual parts of this. This is going to be a long, years-long project, so.
I'm going to reiterate, if you'd like to speak on this this evening, that's fine, I'd like to take this up unless there's objection, I'd like to take this up again after budget season, just because, like I said, we just got this tonight, you're going to speak to this tonight, perhaps get some input from other residents before we name something and start down this road. Personally, I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight, like I said, I got this piece of paper five, ten minutes ago. I'm giving you the option, if you'd like to go over it now, okay, but I'd like to take this up after budget season.
Well, I'm concerned about missing a major deadline, it would take me a year then to go for grant, a specific grant, that I think we can get, to do the concept for it. I don't, I guess I don't share the, the concern about the name, because right now it's just called the Dyhouse Lot or the Bleachery location.
Mm-hmm.
We're not naming it for a person, we're naming it as a kickoff to our centennial celebration, which would be in 2034, 2032, I'm sorry, eight years, and, um, well, we'll see.
How long have you known about this deadline, because when this showed up on the agenda, this is the first I've heard of this.
Well, I attempted to get here a couple of weeks ago, and you didn't have enough on the agenda, and I was asked to move, so you could have had it two weeks earlier, but I don't see it, it's, it's not a budget issue.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's strictly a question of name.
Like I said, if you, if you'd like to go over this this evening, by all means, personally, I wouldn't be prepared to vote on this until after budget season.
All right, I'm going to just do my, my thing.
Go ahead, go through it.
Uh, the first thing I, I want to do though is tell you what I brought, a gift to the town, compliments of the Webster Dudley Historical Society, and funded by the Malzer Trust. It is the work of Charles Levens, um, done within the last hundred years. He was a historian of sorts of the town, and in fact, um, as it says in the line, "In nineteen thirty-nine, the Webster Times printed twenty-two hundred years of progress, Webster Dudley," and they featured George Levens for his work in compiling a wealth of information concerning the community, taking many hours diving into old records from every possible authentic source, and typing these facts in a special volume. This is a special volume, these were, this was a, this is a result of the Webster Dudley Historical Society holding them in their, um, location, the old, old red schoolhouse on School Street, and when I ran into them there, I said, "These are too important to just be molding away," so as a director of that group, I said, "We're going to go out and get a grant," and we have done that, and in front of us is the copy that will be in the Dudley Library, the one, same copy has already gone to the Webster Library, and the originals will also be kept in Dudley because we have the climate-controlled space for them. So, I just want people to know that they can come down to the library, ask at the desk, take a look at them, it's loaded with all historical facts, maps, everything that Charles Levens could accumulate, and thank goodness, he had a typewriter, so as opposed to most stuff that's over a hundred years old, it's not all handwritten, it's indexed, he did a fabulous job on it, I can't even imagine in this day and age getting this kind of information done. So here it is, it's now for, for our residents, it'll also be, um, it's digitized, it'll be online and available as everything now in the world is, so I recommend people come down to the library and check it out. All right, for the real purpose of why I was here, I want to designate, I want the town to designate the old bleechery, or as we call it, the Dyhouse property, um, as Centennial Park, as the first shot, as it were, out of the cannon, uh, for the centennial, the tricentennial, or turcentennial, of the town, which will be in thirty-two, so we have eight years to prepare, which some people might think is a lot, it is not when you're, when you're doing a big centennial celebration. So, here's the, here's the thing, it's in front of you, I know you didn't get it in advance, but, um, we'll read through it, because I want the people at home to hear it. "Centennial Park will be a project of the Tur Centennial Celebration of the Town of Dudley in 2032. Park will be dedicated to the early manufacturing roots of the town and the families who worked in its many mills. The site is a part of a national historic district surrounding the Stevens Linen Mill. It's a tranquil site that was once part of Dudley's foremost linen mill operations, specifically the dying operation. Located at the waterfall from Marino High Pond to Low Pond, the scenic beauty of this location is its most enduring attraction. Since the removal of the buildings, all that remains is some stonework and a large concrete pad that will serve as a performance area. The site gently slopes toward the pad, forming a natural amphitheater with the river as a backdrop." There is one small road, Ardlock Place, connecting the site to Village Street. A few houses are along the short driveway, and one resident, residence is just beyond the park itself. Since this is located away from traffic, the only sound is of the waterfall. The park would be designated for passive recreation, and include areas of lawn for residents to set up their own chairs and or blankets for picnics in advance. Few table benches might be provided along the top-tier overlooking High Pond. Site will be designed for occasional performances or gatherings with lighting, electricity, and water on site. And there is a remaining stone structure that will be used as a focal point for descriptive signage explaining the original use of the site, and additionally, some form of recognition for donors to the park project will be incorporated into the design. The first action required is to obtain a grant to delineate the possible configuration of the park, that concept presentation will allow for fundraising efforts to begin. Focus will be on local families who wish to acknowledge their roots in Dudley, especially families who had ancestors that worked in the mills. Other donors, foundations, businesses, and groups will likewise be approached. Project will aim for completion prior to the Tur Centennial Observation in 2032, and it's a perfect location for that celebration. Questions?
Anyone have any questions? No? Mr. Marcy?
Ed, thanks for bringing this for us, it's pretty good, I know we had talked over the years, years ago about like what to do with that, and I know that your, part of your vision was always to have it be something of like this, so here we are all these years later talking about it, and thank you for bringing that book forward, that's a treasure that we got to keep, so that's, thank you.
Do you have any plans for what this would look like?
No, because we are, we are going to get funds to go out, um, to secure design concepts, so I have already talked to the, uh, design architect that you're using for the park here.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, he and his assistant came out and took a like, look at it, and were very interested, pleased with what it had to offer, um, so they're going to work up some preliminary things, and then I'll get some money to fund that piece of it, the town won't be on the hook for that cost.
Yeah, and I just want to explain myself a little deeper, because I see pieces here about people who worked in the mills, I mean, my father ran the Webster Dudley Paper Mill until it closed, my mom worked at Stevens Linen until I was five, it was too much of a handful, she had to stay home from work, but I like the idea, but I, like I said, I think, I, we, we've got a lot going on right now with, with the budget going on, and I, I think we'd like some more information before we name it and commit to something without a, without a plan and approximate cost, uh, will there be enough fundraising to cover this, there, there's just a, I think we need more information, and if anyone wanted to add on that, Mr. Johnson?
Through the chair, it'd probably be a good idea to, uh, put our questions together and get it back to Mr. Bazanet with a list of questions, and try to handle that quickly.
Yeah, I don't, I, there are a lot of questions out there, trust me, I have thousands of them, the thing I want to do is just do the one first step, is say, this location, which has been a eyesore for a long time, um, can be designated, something better than the Dyhouse Lot, and then, then we go from there, we start, you have public hearings, uh, design concepts come forward, and we say, how do people think about this, what do they think about that? It's easier for me initially to get a, um, a donor by calling it something other than the Dyhouse Lot, I mean, I can just say, the plans would be to name it something or other, but, um, my sense is if they don't think there's support to go forward with that kind of thing, they might just say, well, we're not going to, we'll do a pass on it, and then I'm, I'm a year behind on funding, and this stuff takes years to fund. It, this will be one of those where you go out to lots of businesses and, just like if you were building a library, and say, okay, you had people that worked in town, what mills? What's the name of the family, or families, how do we incorporate family names, not every name, but their, the group names of families, but each family probably had a male and a female working, so two family names could come down from that easily, um, so there are going to be a lot of names there, and it just gives us a chance to go back and say, who were they, where do they work, what do they do, how do we represent this, and how do we say to the town, here's something the town doesn't have now, right now it has an empty area, um, something usable, something specific, something that we can, um, all come together on and, and design, and, you know, make it, um, a big part of our centennial. I mean, we owe it to ancestors, as we say, all those others, and those that are coming after us, um, and I think this is a perfect location, I don't know, it's not impacted by Stevens Mill, it's separate from that issue, um, but certainly with what we've got planned on sidewalks and things starting up that street, um, this is a nice side from that.
Other questions?
There's a lot, but.
To the chair, um, I know Mr. Bazanet said he's looking just for a name to get the ball rolling, so maybe devil's advocate type question, does, by naming it, Ed, does that give like tacit approval, like that the board is behind whatever the end result is before we see it, you know what I'm getting at, because it, and like it says in your letter, it's a, it's a small, you say driveway, small road to get up there, and first it says passive recreation, you know, lawn for residents to set up their chairs and blankets, then it says occasional performances on a concrete pad with lighting, electricity, and water. So, I don't know what the impact is going to be over there in that neighborhood, and I know you said we do public hearings, but if you go down, if we go down the road of naming it, and you go down the road of fundraising and grants, at what point does the, does the ball keep rolling, that can't be stopped, I guess what I'm getting at, like if people come in from that neighborhood and they say, "We don't want that behind us."
There's nowhere to park.
That's what I'm, I'm thinking that too, I, no, I know there's going to be sidewalks in the neighborhood for people to walk up and this and that, but is it, is the, I guess, without seeing a plan, I guess is the intent to have, wait, like you said in one part, a few tables and benches maybe provided, or chairs and blankets, or is it the intent to end up with a, a pad for, like you say, occasional performances, and by that you mean like musical, or, or somebody coming in like with a, with a book, you know, historical, we're going to do a talk, and then it gets into, as Kerry just said, the parking, I mean, it's, I, I would like to see a, a con, at the minimum, like a conceptual plan that says, we can fit, I'll make it up, fifteen cars up there, we, we're going to do seating for twelve on benches, the rest would be bring your own, you know what I'm saying, with a, with a separate, it's just, as you said, thousand questions, and Kerry made it clear in the beginning, and I think, I mean, I know, I have questions, not saying that, it would, the end result wouldn't be something I would support, it's just, it's hard, like if I made, please say, yeah, Centennial Park, go with it, Ed, and six months from now we come back, we say, now we had public hearing, the people don't want it, and you say, well, I already got the grant, and I got fundraising, and when, when does, when does it become a typical?
Well, I'm asking for a name on it, that is the focus for me to go fundraise and say, this is what we're thinking about, pick an architect to do the concept stuff for us, have the hearings, um, and that all takes time, get people involved, and there'll be lots of people that want to get their, um, ideas in, and that's, that's great, I don't have any problem with that, it's a pretty blank canvas at the moment, um, when we quote buried the buildings, um, we worked to get that as a rolling amphitheater, and it's pretty close, if you look up there, if you go there and you look at it, it's set that way, we left the concrete pad because that would be the logical space for any performance to come in. Webster's River Walk is pretty much kind of the same idea, um, when the French River Com, um, Commission went for that, we looked at what could we do, had to have lighting, had to have electrical, had to have water, but otherwise open space, and how could it be used, and that's been a, a pretty good location, we've had concerts, we've had, um, troops come in, Shakespearean troops did some, some wonderful work there, and people said, "That'll never fly in Webster," and it did, and it still does, and the town has founded a good, good location to do things, um, for celebrations, and I think this is very, very similar, it's a little more, um, private than, than the one in Webster, although most people in Webster don't even know they have, they, they have a park there that does this, um, but it's a cultural asset, and it's not a basketball area, it's not something we're going to be bright lights and noisy kids and all of that going on. I've talked to a few residents in the area, and their biggest concern would be noise, um, you know, what's happening, and, you know, my area, not in my backyard, some of them have very large noisy boats, and I think, you're, you're doing a worse job than is ever going to be done just down the dam, um, but we need to give the town something.
Well, the thing about the Webster one, if I'm, you're talking about the one we had a post office, right?
Correct.
Is zero impact on residents' houses because it's boarded by plumbing shop, post office, parking lot, back of commerce, plenty of parking, already delineated parking, or parking lots, I, I think, and, believe me, I used to leave the post office, I did see people down there having celebrations, and it is a great spot, but there's minimal impact on residents, and I know you're just saying, you're talking about NIMBY people, and that to me, and I mean, I don't want to be the, I don't, I don't want to speak out of term, I don't want to be the bad guy either, if we say, sure, start, start the process, but then when it comes time to do a conceptual design, we can't come to an agreement, and the board says, sorry, give the money back, for want of a better term, that's, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Mr. Karman Yani had his hand up, before he speaks, I just wanted to ask, is there, oh no, please come up, I, I just, this is going to leave my brain if I don't ask. Is there a better place in town, because I'm, I'm thinking, when I was a kid going down there, and it's, where are we going to park, you're going to fit a dozen people down there, maybe a little more unless you.
Bigger than you think.
Okay, Rich?
Good evening, um, through the chair, this is very similar to what was being proposed behind the courthouse, uh, sort of the revamp of Tanyard Road, Dudley Hill, and Airport, where I'm seeing somebody who has a vision, who's looking to sort of get a green light to get some grant money, to have some professionals assemble a plan so that it can be vetted, not an automatic green light, though I fully appreciate the idea of not handing over, you know, free rein to, to anyone or, or any department to do that, but I've had discussions with Mr. Bazanet previously, the idea being that you could get a concept there and turn it into more usable space, absolutely the people around there have, should have a say, uh, it should fit with the rest of the neighborhood, but I see this request very similar to other requests being brought forward, that there's a spark, and let's nurture the spark, as opposed to, that's, I am very much in favor of this. to, that's, I am very much in favor of this. I like the idea that you could have a piece of the waterfront done correctly. Probably more Shakespeare than there are going to be heavy metal concerts that keep people up at night. But the idea that there's a positive use for it, and we'll get the professionals to bring that forward. And if I could end with the last piece, there's been two iterations of how to best address the traffic, the sidewalks, and everything over on Airport Road and what have you. So I don't believe it's going to skip a couple of sections. I do agree there should be some engagement. I think there's going to be some positive engagement on this. So I, I would like to see something like this move forward. Again, the best line is here that there would be funding outside of the town immediately to get those concepts started.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Just like to reiterate, I'd love to beautify and preserve parts of our town. Can we now move on, collect our questions in the next X number of days and get them back to Mr. Bazanet quickly so we can get the answers to them, so that we can move forward potentially with confirming it as a park?
Sounds good. Anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Marcy?
So when I saw this on the agenda, I was actually kind of pleased because, like I said earlier, this was always the vision for that piece, and I always thought it was a fantastic idea, because we got to do something with it. I don't see anybody knocking down our door to do anything else with it. And you got to start somewhere, right? We have, we have people who want to make, this is another way to make Dudley a destination. We're not solving what it looks like right now. But in order to like get, get to that point, you have to start somewhere, right? And that is as simple as a name. We're not saying that we approve or we have all this other stuff. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request to name the Dyhouse property Centennial
Mr. Marcy, is there any second before I address Mr. Marcy? Anyone? No? Mr. Marcy, I, I, you did, and I'm going to speak just for me, not for the board. I think once you name it, we own it. It's kind of like a cat that keeps showing up at your house as soon as you call it. Jasper or whatever, now it's your pet. I, we got this a few minutes before the meeting. Personally, I'd like to see more. I'd like to see, even if it's a hand sketch, something, an approximate ballpark of what it would cost. Are we going to get enough donations? I don't know. The women's club worked very, very hard to get donations for a playground, and that's something that people wanted. People wanted that playground. And still, despite their best efforts, it hasn't happened yet.
I understand.
I just want more information and as I...
I do too. I have tons of questions too.
I'd rather reevaluate this after the budget.
Just don't want to see it die on the vine, that's all.
I don't think not naming it is going to cause it to die on the vine, Mr. Marcy. Mr. Coach Shinoski, fire chief?
I had a question, I don't know if anybody can answer it. Is naming it binding in any way? I mean, you're still going to get the information regardless, and if people kicked back on it, you could always come back and vote a name change, correct?
Mr. Johnson?
That's one of the many questions I have that I want to collect, because if there's some kind of legal binding that doesn't allow us any wiggle room after that. So we need to have those answers, whether the town council or someone else has to answer them, I don't know. But at spur of the moment, without, without having any time to prep for it, I don't want to make a mistake. I want this to succeed. I want the town to do what they need to do. Therefore, I want to be able to ask, you know, compile some questions, get the answers that we can do the right thing for both the town and Historical Society.
That's it. Anyone have anything else?
Well, Mr. Chair, I probably need some help making the motion. May I defer to Mr. Johnson? We can table it to our next meeting, which means it automatically comes up for reconsideration. And in the interim, try to use that two-week window, or one week of it at least, to incorporate Mr. Johnson's suggestion about get questions individually. Would they go to you, Ed, or would they go to the Historical Commission?
They can go to me, yeah.
Okay. Get them to get our questions to Mr. Bazanet and see what we can get for the answers. And like you said, even, I mean, I don't know about a hand sketch per se, but, you know.
I get what you're saying.
No, I know what you're saying, but, you know, I'm trying to think, like, you know, I don't want to put pressure on public safety, but would, like, police be able to go up there, for example? Someone get Nelson up there so he can say, look, and listen, here's your space. These are the only, these are the only amount of space that you can have.
That's why I thought the fire chief was coming up to talk about it's too narrow to get a truck there, or I have no problem with it.
No, I just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, I thought that's what you were getting up. I thought you were going to comment on the access somehow for your department.
That would be...
No, we haven't, but we will, and we'll call on you for that.
Right, that's like free resources. We can use our town employees at least, help Mr. Bazanet with the conceptual, like, like you said, Chief Mike Webster and say, I can't support this, I'm not going to take the pick on you, chief, I can't get a ladder truck up here, you know.
We don't know yet.
Right, that's why maybe those gentlemen can help with some suggestions and guidance. Nelson can give some guidance on what he sort of sees. I've been up there many times where the Dyos was up and now it's down. And I'm not even sure, except that I remember a few years ago, we had someone semi approached the town, he wanted to buy and build condos there, and we told him that was not an option at that time. I'm not even sure, like, where the road lays out, like, we had problems...
Don't know.
Where the old indoor water wheel was, we had to find out the road was shifted, what, four, six feet? It was, people were parking behind the old building, you know, it's, I think, I think it's prudent if we just at least pump it to the next meeting, get our questions, try to get as many answered as we can.
Is that 4-8 the next meeting?
4-1.
Oh, 4-1.
Yeah.
Two weeks from today.
My, my deadline is before April 1, because that's when they propose, those have to be in for the Malzer Trust grant. And I would see this as an absolute win with them. They've supported all the things we did on the French River and supported the things we have in the library. And they're just, it's the right kind of project for them. You could still put that in, we just haven't named it. We would have been two weeks into this already, so, but... You could still put in for that grant, we just haven't named it. We're not telling you not to put in for the grant. I understand. And I, if they're going to make or break a decision on a name... It's the... I'm missing something here. It's not quite as exciting to them as a board to say, oh, they're thinking of something if they don't sense that that's going to be moving forward under a certain umbrella, you know? So the name is important. Conceptual design, I'm sure conceptual design for a proposed Centennial Park. Yes. Or the selectmen would like to have an idea of what's going on. I will have to fluff the wording, that's all that I can say. Because I can't stipulate. I'll just say proposed and leave it at that. And then I can talk, I can put a side letter if I need to, so they know what the concerns are. But all the things you're raising are what we want to start asking. And the only way to ask that is to have professionals available to us, which costs money, and that's why I'm looking for the money. Anything else from anyone? 4-1, 4-8?
Yeah, if you...
4-24, what's your pleasure?
I mean, you can declare it, so it comes up on the next agenda.
Without objection, I'll table it until the next, the next agenda, April 1st.
Yeah, and try to, we want to try to get your questions individually to Mr. Bazanet.
Could we give them all to one person and give them all to him at once, so he's not answering five different emails? Would that be easier?
Well, yeah. Guess what?
I'm just trying to make it, just trying to make it small.
And I don't want to dance that fine line of reaching a consensus outside of session with...
I don't want to do that either.
With official actions of the board, which questions would be?
Well, then we each just send them individually to Mr. Bazanet.
Yeah, I need...
Yeah, that's the safest.
I'm trying to make it easier for you, sir, but... Okay, anything else from anyone?
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Sean Bowes, permission to hold a toll booth on Saturday, June 1st, 2024, with a rain date of Saturday, June 8th, 2024, for a Pan Mass Challenge fundraiser. Mr. Bowes, this seems like a Groundhog Day. Every year I've been here, come back.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Thank you for having me. So looking for permission for June 1st, rain date of June 8th, for the Pan Mass. It's been great over the last 10 years. The town has been unbelievable in support of it, to myself and my family, and it's just a great time. So I, I appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you again to request another toll booth.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Sean's been doing this for quite some time. I see no reason to not do it again. So I move that we grant permission to hold the toll booth on Saturday, June 1st, 2024, with a rain date of Saturday, June 8th, 2024, for a Pan Mass Challenge fundraiser.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Sullivan?
I know Michelle just stepped out. I would just like to just confirm, we do a no consecutive week policy? I want to make sure we don't have anything either the week before or the week after his proposed rain date. We don't allow consecutive weekends. I mean, I'm all for it. And I'm going to say yes, and Michelle comes in and says, oh, we got one on the 15th and
Maybe that's why she ran out of calendar.
Could be.
She thought, she read your mind, so...
While we're waiting, do you want to, how long have you been doing this?
This will be my 13th year as a, as the team that I ride with, my company, we've been doing it for 14 years. My entire family has been involved in some way, shape, or form.
Entire family?
Yes. My wife volunteers, all of my kids have volunteered. My two oldest have ridden with me four and five years now, and my youngest one in the back of the room is doing her first ride this year, so...
Good on you, congratulations.
Got total of four riding this year, and the team itself, we're 32 strong right now. And as a team, we're up over $2.2 million in the last 14 years. So as a family, you know, we're coming up on $150,000, so, over the last 13 years, so. It's been good.
Any questions from public safety at all? Nothing? Just double checking.
So Riley, you want to come up and talk about...
Oh, if you could get her to even come closer, that would be great.
Been waiting for this day her whole life, no more waving signs on the side?
Yep, she's all in now.
Mr. Ruda, we're good with scheduling, dates?
No conflict.
No conflict.
Excellent.
Did we have a motion in a second?
Yeah, and you know, you know the drill, talk to them.
Yes.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Bowes.
Thank you very much.
See you. Good job, Riley.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to get the assessor on the phone to join us remotely. Wait, we have Mr. Carmignani first.
All right, now that's way up. I'm just going to, we'll just put it on you.
Next on the agenda, Richard Carmignani, permission to hold a toll booth on Saturday, September 28th, 2024, with a rain date of Saturday, October 5th, 2024, for a Knights of Columbus fundraiser. Mr. Ruda, you make a better door than a window. I guess we're just not following the rules. Mr. Carmignani, toll booth.
All right, hold on a minute.
The Knights of Columbus fundraiser, you've done this previously, correct?
We have a benevolent group, Dudley and Webster, held it last year, year before. Wonderful opportunity to raise money both locally and nationally. This is one of many things that we do, you might have seen in the Webster Times, separate from this fundraiser. At a football, Super Bowl breakfast, raised some money for not one, but two seminarians who are in Rome at the Vatican. So is, yes, it is Knights of Columbus, it is the Catholic Church. It is generosity, local and at a national level. The last few years have been great, talking about how long we've done this. I remember doing this with Jim Brinker, and I want to say the late Norma Cash Smith was the person who had given us the original permissions to do this. So I'm thinking it might have been '96, somewhere in there. So I appreciate the board's willingness, not only to bring these back, but to give us this, this weekend. If you'll remember, it rained all of the weekends. And last year, the board was very much kind enough to go through and have a rain date for the rain date. So fingers crossed that it is a, a clear and sunny day, but we would still ask for the rain date.
Thank you, Mr. Marcy.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we give permission to hold a toll booth on Saturday, September 28th, 2024, with a rain date of Saturday, October 5th, 2024, for a Knights of Columbus fundraiser.
Second. Motion, second. Any further discussion?
Same question.
We're good with the date? Any questions, public safety? We're good? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
See you for a tutsy roll, thank you. Next on the agenda, Treasurer Collector Richard Carmignani and Principal Assessor Lisa Berg present calculation for debt exclusion to pay for school capital costs as approved by voters on the 9/6/22 for Dudley's portion of the costs and answer related questions. Mr. Carmignani?
Think we have a, we have a handout? Her?
Oh, yes, I've seen that.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Lisa.
Good evening.
So would you like me to explain this worksheet, or, Rich, did you want to go first?
Lisa, if you wouldn't mind just saying who you are for everyone at home, just because they can't see you, if you could do that, please.
Sure, I'm Lisa Berg, I'm the Principal Assessor for the Town of Dudley.
Thank you very much. I just don't want to run afoul of any rules. Go right ahead, thank you.
So I worked up a worksheet for the full, for $3,67,950 normally. When I do the effect on tax rate, I do it based on the total. So I was fortunate enough to get the 15-year breakdown of what it would be each year. So total of 15 years, it is a dollar 95 increase in the tax rate, as you see at the bottom third column. So when I do this, I have to base everything off the last certified year of values, the last certified year of the tax rate, which is fiscal 2024. So obviously, this, this can change, but we have to have a starting point. So I was able, like I said, to get the 15 years worth of breakdown of what the debt exclusion would be each year. So if you look at column three, the first year would add 22 cents to the tax rate, it would increase the tax rate from 1048 to 1070, and the average single-family tax bill would be 4208.69. So the annual increase for that year would be $86.53. And as we go down the column of the increase to the tax rate per year of what the debt is, you can see obviously that it goes down, and the last year would be nine cents, and the average single-family increase would be for the year of $35.40. Now, with all this being said, yeah, I know 22 cents may sound like a lot of money to people, but they have to understand right now, the assessed values are still going up, which makes the tax rate drop. So it may not be 22 cents on the tax rate next year if this debt goes through, it may be less. It may be less. Does that all make sense?
It does, does it? Mr. Johnson?
So, Lisa, does it make sense that the last column is the actual amount that would need to be paid per household on average?
Correct, and that's estimation based off the last certified year fiscal 2024.
And so, if the taxpayers want to know the actual amount that they'd be paying, that's the column, because everything else could be in flux with home values and, and everything else. Okay, thank you.
Exactly, and, and, you know, like I said, these are estimated because I don't know what the fiscal 2025 values are to figure out exactly the increase in the tax rate or the annual increase to the taxes for 2025, because we don't have those numbers yet.
But we know that that last column is the amount we're going to have to pay to pay off the, the, that change. Yep, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Sullivan?
Well, the financial people can correct me if I'm wrong. If I read this chart, what the people have to understand is the roof project was already approved, and it was approved without a source of funding. So, the first column becomes crucial, because if a debt exclusion doesn't pass, that first column is monies we have to come up with from the town government, because I don't think the schools are going to come up with $348,000 to pay for the roof they got, going to come out of your town side of your budget. The number goes down, but that's, that's the big one to me. Yeah, the tax increase, obviously, in the snapshot is important. If the debt exclusion doesn't pass after the people have approved this roof project, that's the number we have to deal with, right, Mr. Ruda?
The, the number we have to deal with is, you're correct, Mr. Sullivan, $3,67,950. It's broken down over the course of 15 years. The first payment, which will be part of our assessment, whether it's debt excluded or not, is at $348,150.
Right.
So, we either debt exclude it, which means you look at it as a, you borrow, you look at it as what it is, the district borrowed money, and we're raising our tax rate to pay off that portion of the assessment, which the school then used to pay off the loan, or we bring it out of the general government side. Essentially, what we're doing is adding $1.95 to the tax rate over the course of 15 years in order to pay off that $3 million.
Right. Second column, sorry, Mike, continue, Mr. Chair. Second column is a descending number, so every year, regardless of the tax rate, that second column, every year, that 22 cents goes down, 18, 18, I'm not going to do the whole thing right here, but, so it will never be any higher than 22 cents.
Correct.
And it's going to, in, in year 15, as part of that $1.95 total over 15 years, it's nine cents. So, I think that's the number that people have to look at, and it's, at least when Rich showed the last column, it starts off at 86.53 and ends up at 35.40.
I just want to clarify this, if I may, for people watching, just to make sure they understand. So, the column where it starts at 22 cents and ends at nine cents, that's for each individual year. They don't piggyback on one another.
It does not accumulate, correct?
So, then 2049, there's no increase.
And at the end of the 15 years, it comes off the tax rate. It's not a permanent increase to the tax rate.
I just want to make sure the people watching at home realize that a debt exclusion goes away when this is paid off. It's a temporary increase, and this is broken down by each year. So, that 22 cents for 2025, that's it for 2025. 2026 starts, and it's a fresh 18 cents. It's not 18 plus 22, it's just 18, correct?
That's correct.
Correct, that you're, it is not accumulating, it's not, it's not 40 cents going up to 58, so on and so forth, you're correct. It is an identifiable portion of the tax rate being this debt, you are correct, 18 cents.
I just don't want someone at home thinking, wow, by the time it hits 2039, my tax rate went up $1.95, and it went up each year by that amount, and it, those years are independent numbers. That's all, I just wanted to add clarity.
Right, Mr. Chair, echo what Lisa said in the beginning. All she can snapshot it is on 2024, so where it says, for example, 2025, 1070, that's a moving target, it could conceivably be lower. The 18 cents would stay the same, but the 1070 could be lower based on evaluations.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Definitely, we can hear you.
Okay. Well, I answered a question, and Rich said the same thing, so I didn't know if I lost you.
Oh, that's great, confirmation, wonderful thing. Anyone else have any other questions?
Nope.
Anything else either of you would like to add that hasn't been covered? No?
Thumbs up, I advocate for this, this is an excellent idea.
Makes sense. Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, no, I wanted to thank Rich and Lisa for coming forward with that. I know we had, like I said last week, we want to see these things before we would present it, but to be put on a ballot, and so, thank you guys for explaining this.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Unless there's another, any other questions, we'll move on to the next. Thank you, thank both of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the historical data, I mean, the, the one point that I brought up the previous meeting was the 2020 debt-excluded dollar amount was $1,552, and the projected one for 2025, or for the current year, 2024, certified by the DOR and everything, is, is 803. So, that $750,000 difference easily, that first-year payment of 345 could fit in there with a little room to spare if you wanted to take a bigger picture, look at things. These are numbers, I could go for hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like next on the agenda is the Board of Selectmen vote to approve debt exclusion ballot question for capital projects approved by voters on the 9/6/22 for Dudley Charlton Regional School District, or take any other action relative thereto.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and a second? Are we going to, do you need us to read the ballot question, Mr. Ruda? Or can we just approve it like that?
There is suggested motion, yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, with, with the, unless of the second, I would draw my original motion to re, read this as a motion.
Usually, I'd ask the clerk to read that, but thank you, Mr. Sullivan. No, thank you, Mr. Sullivan, you already, you already started.
Didn't start anything. Motion to approve the following debt exclusion language to be included on the June 10, 2024 election ballot, and transmit the authorizing vote to the town clerk. Shall the Town of Dudley be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Prop. 2.5, so-called the town share of the amounts required to pay for the cost of roof repairs to the Dudley Middle School building, upgrading fire alarm panels and devices throughout the Dudley Schools facilities, replacing and installing cameras and video infrastructure, upgrading radio communications, conducting an architectural review of Dudley School building projects, and paying related professional fees associated therewith, and including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto as approved by the majority of voters by ballot vote at the September 6th, 2022 Dudley Charlton Regional School District election. Yes or no choice, and provide further. Said question shall be deemed approved. Majority of the persons voting shall vote yes, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, that motion's good with the second there, I assume?
Yes.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Next on the agenda, Town Administrators Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. Three quick items. We today received some more opioid settlement money as the Board of Selectmen calls a town meeting authorized setting up a separate stabilization account qualifying expenditures of money coming in from this national class, class action suit for opioid settlements. On Friday, the town was notified of the following disbursements as part of that settlement. Walgreens payment 1 and 2, $656.83, and 433.55. Teva payment 1, $454.92. CVS payment, $559.85. Elegon payment, $503. Walmart payment, $4,433.19. And distributor payment, $7, $758, and the total is $7,825. So, that will go right into the opioid stabilization account that was set up by authorizing vote of the last town meeting. Anybody who's interested in knowing what those monies can be spent on can visit the Bureau of the Commonwealth's Office of Health and Human Services Department. That's the Substance Addiction Bureau of the Commonwealth's Office of Health and Human Services Department. You can get that online, that information online, just simply by Googling that name, and it'll tell you all the authorizing reasons that the town can spend that money. That was also established by vote at the town meeting. Also, the town received its, and published the final financial audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2023. It was received on Friday afternoon, it was posted this morning on the town's website for public examination. It can be found at DudleyMA.gov backslash accounting by clicking the link, yearly audits. I was going to go through the exercise of showing people how to find that, but I'll leave that up to you, Mr. Chairman, you want me to do that or not?
No, if someone has any questions, they can reach out. I don't want to, I don't want to make you get too into the tech there.
And then, soon we will be publishing and advertising for our April 8th meeting, which is an opportunity for kids to come in and help choose the type of replacement playground equipment that they would like to see at the town playground, including, and it will be included on the application to the Commonwealth's Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities Grant Program. So, we talked a little bit about the Centennial Park and how we have to lead up to things, and as the board remembers, we had the renderings that people voted on for the playground and green space out here at the, at the town hall. That was up for six months, people voted. We came up with a concept plan based on the input from the residents that decided to vote, and we want the kids to come in and pick out what kind of equipment they'd like to see as part of the grant application. The funds that were donated were used to come up with the conceptual drawings and to work on the application for the grant program and so forth. So, we used that fund, paid it forward to get the grant application in order, put together conceptual designs, and moved forward to apply for the grant, which will be around $400,000 if we're successful. So, that's often the way these projects come together. There's always, you know, step one through 10 before you can actually get the funding to pay for the entire amount. Some of it was, came from donations and so forth. So, we look forward to that meeting, we look forward to publicizing it, and we look forward to the residents and their kids coming in to decide what kind of equipment will be placed on that playground. And the grant application deadline is April 25th. That's it for my report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions?
Motion to accept the Town Administrator's report.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next on the agenda, Departmental Communication, George, do you have anything? Nothing. Mr. Gatsky, do you have anything? No pressure if any of you don't.
Just been having the guys do just normal spring cleanup, patching holes, just normal plow damage, just trying to catch up with winter damage and move forward. Hopefully, we don't get any more snow. It's about it.
Thank you.
Thanks, MJ.
Fire Chief, do you have anything? Nothing? Police Chief?
Just real quick, I got some good news for the, for the board. I know I've talked about this for the last couple of months, about maybe trying to introduce different programs at Dudley PD. One of them was the K-9 program, we've talked about a drone program, accident reconstruction, and through a generous donation through a resident, we were able to obtain $50,000 as a donation to bring back the K-9 program. So, we're gonna, we're looking into getting a bloodhound for the K-9. The closest bloodhound for the Worcester County is Northern County, north of Worcester, so we're going to try to get a bloodhound, and also a drone that goes in conjunction with that. So, just wanted to let the board know that the biggest cost is a startup, and we had a local resident approach us and donated $50,000 towards those programs. So, I'll have more information once we get them up and running, but I'm hoping to get the programs running summertime. And once we get closer, if the, if the donor wants to reveal who she is, they are, I'll let everybody know. That's about it.
Thank you, Chief.
Fantastic, Chief, thank you.
Rich, do you have anything? I know we bugged you a couple of times today, I don't know if you've got everything out or if you've got.
Getting my steps in, this is wonderful. No collector, treasurer things tonight, just quickly. Bill Conley passed, member of the Knights of Columbus, I knew him outside of this place, as everyone knows. Marine Corps Colonel, almost impossible to kill such gentleman. Served as a water commissioner for a good long while. Personal friend of mine, also very happy to see him here. I am with my, we shared something in common. His wife is a Kathleen Conley, and my wife Kathleen was a Conley before she became a Carminiani, so please remember him in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Next up, Student Representative. Okay. Next up, Board Member Comments, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Carminiani. I know we usually do it at the beginning, and my, my last, I meant to recognize Mr. Conley. Good guy, used to see him around town quite a bit, him and his family, but always had a smile, you know, a story to tell or a laugh, and I know he was sure proud of that Corvette he used to bring to the parade every year. Mr. Conley's going to be missed, and I apologize for not getting it out in the beginning, but it was on my Selectmen comment in my head, so sympathies to the family of Wild Bill Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Johnson?
I don't have any tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Laitre?
No, sir.
Mr. Marcy, do you have anything?
No, Rich, Rich brought that up as well, thank you for doing that, Rich. I was saying that Bill was a friend, you know, got involved in a lot of things in his community, and he will be missed. God bless you, Bill, and his family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Marcy. Before we go into executive session, I, I just wanted to comment on the earlier altercation, altercation, interaction with Mr. Baznet. In, in my, in my job, in my work, I'm always taught to hire slow and fire fast. And what that means is you, you make a good decision, you do your research, you get your ducks in a row, and you, whether it's hiring a person, signing a contract, you make sure you covered your bases and you did the right thing. And by firing fast, meaning once you realize you make a mistake, you cut your losses as quick as you can. The, the, the part of this isn't the firing quick part, it's the hiring slow part. Want to make sure we're doing the best we can for the residents, because I know, I know the residents don't want their taxes going up. And I want to make sure, I mean, everybody's re-boutifying the community, wouldn't be, but it's, we, we got these literally a few minutes before the meeting, didn't know what was going to happen, don't have any conceptual design, and it seems to be to me like by naming it, we would be giving our approval for something that we don't know the full scope, the, the full scope of. So, I, I think we did the right thing, we're doing this slowly, and if the grant is due by April 1st, then maybe we should have gotten this sooner. That's all I've got. What, what's that old saying, an emergency on your part doesn't mean an emergency on my part kind of thing, or lack of planning, something. Anyway, will the clerk please take us into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to convene into executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, subsection 21A2, to hear two matters. To consider the purchase, exchange. To consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of a real property as declared by the chair, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation position of the public body as also declared by the chair, so employ agreements not to reconvene in open session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Mark Landry, aye.
John Marcy, aye.
Steven Sullivan, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Kerry Siggen, aye.